Monday, April fourteenth, twenty thirteen, or twenty fourteen. It says thirteen.
(laughing).
Whoops. Twenty fourteen, Raymore City Council meeting. Call, roll to confirm a quorum, please.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner.
Here.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Pifo.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get to the first item there, I understand there is a staff report from the city clerk. May we have the staff report?
Due to unforeseen circumstances in the county court's office, only the certification of the election results for the council seats has been received with the county election authority. These are the ones that have been distributed to you tonight on the P S. According to the county court's office, the election results received that were included in the original council package are the final numbers from the election, but the original certification statement from the county will not be issued on those questions until April the twenty-first. Based on this information, staff does approve council approved Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight and declare the results of the entire election. On receipt of the certification statement, those will be provided through the council. On the charter member questions, if my new from now those members do change, we would report the bill to amend the election results.
Any questions of staff? Okay. All right. We'll move forward with the new business then. We have one item of business this evening. The first reading of the election results.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, certifying the re- declaring the results of the April second, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, April eighth, twenty fourteen, excuse me, election and declaring this bill as an emergency.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight, declaring April eighth, two thousand fourteen, election results as an emergency reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This is an emergency reading, so we'll do the second reading this evening. And maybe we have the, I will open the, it's a public hearing?
It's not exactly a public hearing, sir, but the charter does require that if you, for nights when there's an emergency reading, that you do allow the public to, anybody from the public who wishes to comment before second reading to do so.
Okay. So I'll open the floor for public comment then. If anybody would like to come forward and make comment. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public comment and I'll ask for a second reading in its entirety of Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight.
The second reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight in its entirety, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, declaring the results of the April eighth, twenty fourteen election and declaring this bill as an emergency. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section one, it is hereby found and determined by a canvass of the votes by the city council of the city of Raymore, Missouri at the election held on April eighth, twenty fourteen, in conformity with the Comprehensive Election Act of nineteen seventy-seven, revised statutes of Missouri, the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Councilmember from Ward one, two-year term, candidate Jeffrey Stevens, total votes received one hundred and eighteen. The city council does find that Jeffrey Stevens is the candidate for councilmember from Ward one who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until his successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember from Ward two, two-year term, candidate Derek Morehead, total votes received two hundred and twenty-nine. The city council does find that Derek Morehead is the candidate for councilmember from Ward two who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember from Ward three, two-year term, candidate Jay Holman, total votes received two hundred and fifty-nine. The city council does find that Jay Holman is the candidate for councilmember from Ward three who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember from Ward four, two-year term, candidate Sonya Abdelgawad, total votes received two hundred and twenty-one. Bob West, total votes received one hundred and nine. The city council does find that Sonya Abdelgawad is the candidate for councilmember from Ward four who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Section one, shall Article three, City Council, Section three point two B, composition, qualification, election and terms of the charter of the city of Raymore be amended to include as a qualification that a candidate for city council not be in arrears for unpaid city taxes, liens or forfeitures, and shall not have been found guilty or pled guilty to a felony. Yes, total votes received nine hundred and fifty-nine. No, total votes received seventy-seven. The city council does find that question one was approved by the voters and that the city charter shall be amended accordingly. Question two, shall Article four, Mayor, Section four point two A, qualifications, elections and terms of the charter of the city of Raymore be amended to include as a qualification that a candidate for mayor not be in any arrears for unpaid city taxes, liens or forfeitures, and shall not have been found guilty or pled guilty to a felony? Yes, total votes received nine hundred and sixty-three. No, total votes received seventy-six. The city council does find that question two was approved by the voters and that the city charter shall be amended accordingly. Section three, shall Article fourteen, general provisions, Section fourteen point seven, charter amendment of the charter of the city of Raymore be amended to outline specific procedures when petitions are received for proposed charter amendments? Total votes received, yes, eight hundred and fifty-seven. No, total votes received one hundred and forty. The city council does find that question three was approved by the voters and that the city charter shall be amended accordingly. Section two, it is further found, declared and determined that notice of study election was duly given and published in the manner provided by law and that study election was held and conducted in all respects in conformity with the Constitution and laws of the state of Missouri governing elections and subject to the provision for charter cities. Section three, severability. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portions shall be deemed a separate, distinct and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section four, emergency reading. This bill is declared and authorized as an emergency and will be read in its entirety to promote the administration of government and permit the newly affected elected officials to begin their terms. Section five, effective date. The effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Duly read this first time the fourteenth day of April, twenty fourteen. Be it remembered that the above ordinance was approved and adopted this fourteenth day of April, twenty fourteen, by the following vote.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill twenty-nine fifty-eight, declaring April eighth, two thousand fourteen, election results.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I take care of the business for this, except for the oath of office. So Ms. Warner, please conduct the oaths of office.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jeffrey Stevens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications.
Possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances.
And all of the ordinances.
Of the city of Raymore.
The city of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
The office of councilmember.
For which I am elected.
For which I'm elected.
Congratulations. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Derek Morehead.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications.
I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
To the office.
To the office.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances.
And all of the ordinances.
Of the city of Raymore.
Of the city of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
For which I've been elected.
Congratulations. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jay Holman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications.
I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances.
And all of the ordinances.
Of the city of Raymore.
And all of the ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
Congratulations. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jay Holman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications.
I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances.
And all of the ordinances.
Of the city of Raymore.
Of the city of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
For which I've been elected.
Congratulations. Thanks. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sonya Abdelgawad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications.
I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
To the office.
To the office.
Of, to which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances of the city of Raymore.
And all of the ordinances of the city of Raymore.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
Congratulations. You raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Dr. Pifo, if you'll join me at the podium? Well, it was a short stint on the council, but an important one. In recognition of your contributions to the city and the city council, we have a plaque here that's Robert Pifo, an appreciation and recognition for your dedicated service and a commitment to the city of Raymore, Missouri as a councilmember for Ward three from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen. So congratulations and thank you for your service. (applause).
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and just a thank you to the council who put faith in me to serve for the last, whatever, eight, nine months, whatever it's been. It's been a joy to work with each of you and pinch hit. If you need a pinch hitter again, I'll be on the bench.[878.43][878.43](laughing). But I, in, I, my comments really are directed more to the, to the citizens of Raymore, I think, to tell them how fortunate they are to have this council. Before last August, I was a regular old citizen of Raymore, and in working with this council the last, what, eight or nine months, what I found, and I really should talk more to the audience, but I, the microphone is this way, so I'm going to suck.[902.73][902.73](laughing). What I found, and I don't know if anyone here has read, and we have some high school students here, so I'll give you a reading assignment. There's a book called Theodore Rex by Edmund Morris, and it deals with Teddy Roosevelt. And Morris talks about, in his book, he talks about the non-economic virtues. And, and he lists some of them, and I won't remember them all, but he talks about things like intelligence, courage, unselfishness, decency. And I have seen all of those and more as I've worked with this council this year. So thank you to all of you for reinforcing our decision to move to Raymore about seven years ago. And let me close by thanking the most important folks here, and that is wherever they are, the staff, who really make the vision of this group happen. And, and we just have an outstanding staff. I said at the last council meeting, I cannot say it enough, how blessed we are to have the staff that we have serving the city of Raymore. So thank you, staff. Thank you, council. And thank you, everyone, for your support.
On the next item, I will entertain a motion to remove the selection of Mayor Pro Tem from the agenda and place it as the first item of new business in the special meeting to follow.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem to the first item of new business in the special meeting that follows.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of all the business for this meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The meeting is adjourned. We'll break for some celebration here and then return for the special meeting. You know, you, you know it's a, it's a bad thing. April fourteenth, Raymore City Council Special Meeting. Please call, roll, confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a presentation this evening. If Park Director Kennedy will join me at the podium? And I'll let you talk about what this is all about, because I, I know just spoke a little bit about it. But Raymore is being honored now as, or recognized now as a Tree City, USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. So I'll present this plaque to you. And ask you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. Tree City, USA, it's, it's a milestone, I believe, for our community, and I guess just like to talk real briefly about what it means and what we had to do to qualify. First of all, there's, there's four standards that are required for a city to, to be accepted as a Tree City applicant. The first one of those is to have a tree board. We have to have a tree care ordinance. We have to have a community forestry program with an annual budget that is at least two dollars per capita, and we have to have an Arbor Day celebration. We met all of those requirements both last year and will again meet them this year along with the application that we filled out, and we received notification just recently of, of our city being awarded the Tree City, USA. And just kind of one of the things I guess I'd like to talk just briefly about, too, is what trees provide in our community. Community cooling. By having trees in our community, it basically allows shade for not only our homes and our businesses, but even our streets and our public parks, which drops the temperature of our, our community and what it could be. It boosts property values. By having trees in your lot, it is, is, according to the realtors, it is, is something that enables you to get more money for your home and have better value for your home. It help cleans the air that we breathe. Trees obviously cut energy costs, both in, in keeping the sun rays that directly affect our homes, and this could be sometimes up to twenty-five percent. And finally, the aesthetic value that trees provide. Trees, to me, are, are something that, that really add to our community as far as making it a place to, to enjoy and to live. So with this, we, we plan on establishing these trees in our community and continue to plant more trees. And I just really want to thank all the city staff and Mr. Berlin and, and everyone that made this possible, and Mayor Kirkoff, thank you to you two for helping us with this application. So that's all I have. If there's any questions, but again, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Moving, yeah. Moving on to personal appearances, beginning with Don Peters of the Cass County Historical Society.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Don Peters. I'm the new executive director for the Cass County Historical Society, and I appreciate you guys taking the time for me to present a concept to you of a program we would like to run in concert with the North Cass Herald and the Raymore Presbyterian Church. This coming Memorial Day, we would like to recreate a program that used to run over a hundred years ago in Raymore. Downtown Raymore for many years, what they called Decoration Day back then, they used to have a parade every year that began at the Presbyterian Church, went to the cemetery, and they honored the veterans of the Civil War. What our proposal is, we would like to recreate that concept this year, basically following the exact same theme and the same location that they did back in eighteen ninety-eight. We're going to meet at the Presbyterian Church. We're going to have a parade, a simple parade that goes down to the cemetery. And at the cemetery, we're going to recognize the graves of all the Civil War veterans that are buried there. And at this point, we have recognized twenty Union veterans and eight Confederate veterans, and we'll acknowledge them and recognize them by putting a flag on each one of their graves. I want to put a little bit of a unique twist to it, though, however, this year. I want the parade to be strictly for veterans. All veterans that we can find, be it in Cass County, Belton, Harrisonville, Raymore, wherever we can find them. We'd like to have a parade just to the veterans to let them realize the recognition they richly deserve. We're going to separate the parade out into eras of service, so we'll have banners being carried to recognize World War II era, Korean War era, Vietnam War era, Cold War era, et cetera, right up to the present day. We want all those veterans just to be able to walk to the crowd, be recognized by the crowd, be cheered by the crowd, and then they will go with us to the cemetery to recognize the Civil War veterans. One thing that we're going to do with this approval is we're going to ask for donations as we take the parade from the people that are there viewing it. And we're going to take these donations, we're going to split them fifty-fifty between the Wounded Warrior Fund and the Honor Flight Program for World War II veterans. So I approached you today to just, again, ask to run this by you and get the council's appreciation to, do you like this idea? Is it something you're favorable for, and is something we can go ahead and move forward on? We'll actually be doing it on Memorial Day itself, on Monday, and we're looking to start the parade in the mid-morning, and I don't expect it to take more than forty-five minutes to an hour or so to complete the entire program. So with that, any questions?
Councilmember Westco?
I think this is a wonderful idea. What do you see our role as the council, as the city? How do you see us being involved in this, in the parade?
The main role, I think, from a physicality standpoint, is just to allow us to utilize the roads and for the police to keep those roads closed in the timeframe. But quite frankly, I want this to be about all the veterans, so your support. All the support that you guys can put behind promoting this event, helping us get the word out to the event. And I'm very sincere when I say, I want to get as many veterans as we can possibly find. So anybody of any health conditions, if they need help, I may ask for people of the community to help maybe push a wheelchair, to drive a car for those that may be wounded and can't walk. But other than that, just really the city, the council, and the mayor's office, just for your support for this program.
Thank you. We have another personal appearance this evening, and I'm probably going to murder the last name here. It's Cole Kiper. Thank you. And Callie Allen with the Raymore Precious High School Relay for Life Event.
Hello. My name is Cole Kiper, and I am this year's Relay for Life event chair. And with me is our staff partner, Callie Allen. Relay for Life is a twelve-hour event, and it symbolizes that cancer never sleeps, and neither, neither will we. It is a, an event to celebrate our survivors and caregivers, remember our loved ones that we have lost, and fight back against this horrible disease. Money raised goes to the American Cancer Soci- Cancer Society to help those cancer patients with research, any assistance they need, living and programs that we have are supported with the money that we raise. We would appreciate anyone to visit our website, www relayforlife.org backslash Ray Pecmo, and donate, sign up as a team captain, a participant, and also, our event is June thirteenth and fourteenth, and from six to eight, six PM to eight AM, and help us continue this fight against cancer.
Great. Any questions? Jay?
I may have missed it. Is your organization targeted towards all forms of cancer or a specific type?
All forms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thank you, sir. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. The Easter Festival will be this Saturday, April nineteenth, at Memorial Park. Over fifteen thousand eggs, photos with the Easter Bunny, a cupcake walk, refreshments, and other activities. And this event starts at ten AM in the morning. We advise everyone to be just a little bit early so you can get your best position to hunt Easter eggs. Our fourth annual Jog With Your Dog. This is a fundraiser for Raymore Animal Control. It is April twenty-sixth, ten AM in the morning. We call it Jog With Your Dog, but you don't have to run. In my case, I'm going to walk with my dog.[1696.11][1696.11](laughing). Okay. Please come on out. It is a great thing. We think we're going to have a lot of participants this year. There's other activities. Several of the veterinarians from town have, have committed to come out this year and, and talk to you about the health of your pets and some of the things you can do. Plus, we'll have several booths. I think Pet Spawn is going to be there.
do. Plus, we'll have several booths. I think Pet Spawn's going to be there. So we invite you to come out. It starts at the Animal Control Building at the public work slot. So bring yourself, or bring yourself and your dog. All right. Next event is, the concession stands are now open at Recreation Park. We have a great selection of healthy foods this year. So we invite you to come out, watch a little baseball, watch a little soccer, soccer, and you can eat healthy. Okay. And finally, baseball and recreation, or excuse me, competitive baseball starts this week. Unfortunately, we got rained out this evening, but we hope to be playing ball tomorrow night. We have 517 kids registered for baseball, softball this year. Lot of fun, lot of kids, and it's a guaranteed inexpensive time for the whole family to come out and watch some good sporting activity. Oh, and I guess I do need to do a, a plug for Arts in the Park. Again, this June 21st activity at the Farmers Market area, it's a showcase for all our local artists. A great opportunity to come out and see some of the best artists in Raymore and what they bring to our community. We'll have live entertainment on a stage, concessions, and a whole lot of kids' activities. And again, this is free to the public. It's from 10 o'clock in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And again, that is at the Farmers Market area. With that, entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions? Councilmember?
Important question for my son. You mentioned healthy stuff at the concession stands. You're still selling candy and pop, right? All the bad stuff, too?
We put all the healthy stuff on the top of the concession stand list, but yes, we still sell candy and pop and popcorn and those other things that I really like a lot.
That will calm my son's concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Wesco?
I know that we had a lot of rain over the weekend, and then some of that white stuff this morning. Did the fields drain like we anticipated them to do, having changed the surface?
We actually did not play tonight because of temperatures. We could have played ball. Literally, the fields were able to be able to be played on. The outfield's would have been a little soggy and stuff, but the infield's did drain very well.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I'm assuming the pitch, hit, and run got, got rained out?
Yes, we've contacted, it did, sir. Yes, it did get rained out. This is an Optimus Club event that Parks and Recreation helps with. I have a meeting with the club tomorrow to try to determine if we are going to have a make-up date for this event, but as soon as we have something available, I will make it available to everyone.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. I'll call in Community Development Director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. Just briefly go over the upcoming meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They do have a public hearing scheduled tomorrow evening, and their topic will be the 19th Amendment to our Unified Development Code, which is on the stream of upper protection requirements that are in our city code. This is a continuation of the hearing they had in February. There have been some modifications made to the ordinance based upon public comment that we received, and input that we received from, from several individuals. So we're hoping to move forward with that, with those amendments tomorrow evening. And then on May 6th, the commission will have a public hearing. This will be their annual review of the adopted growth management plan. There is a annual review and report that was prepared by staff, presented to the commission for their consideration and, and action, and then again, a schedule for May 6th. And that's all we currently have on the schedule. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I have a, just a few items. First of all, based upon Mr. Peters' presentation to you during personal appearances, we will plan on working with him and the Cass County Historical Society on the Memorial Day Parade that he spoke of. We'll, we'll work on traffic control and helping to publicize the event in any way that we can. So we look forward to working with, with that group on, on the First Annual Memorial Day Parade. Would just like to congratulate the Municipal Court Department. We, on a quarterly basis, make an award to a department that's shown exemplary teamwork, and the Municipal Court was awarded a pizza party for their teamwork in setting up an attorney's docket. We've been, done that a few times now, and that's done a lot to help to ease congestion on, on court nights. And so they were, they, they received that award, and they'll, they'll have some pizza probably before court, one of these times coming up. Would just note that we will be having a council member orientation with new council member Holman this Wednesday. He will, been through it. It'll be the usual, where we'll give him the opportunity to meet all the members of the management team, take care of some housekeeping items, take a tour of the city, do an overview of the budget. So we look forward to meeting with you on, on Wednesday, sir. And would just like to ask the members of the Roundabout Feature Committee, you, you have been meeting often before, the half hour or so before work sessions. We were kind of hoping that you were planning on meeting this coming Monday, the 21st. We wanted to sort of talk to you about the RFQ that you discussed moving forward with at your last work session, and, and also maybe discuss with you the possibility maybe putting in some temporary landscaping into the, the interior while we work on the more permanent feature, just to dress it up a little bit. So we wanted to, to talk to you about those things. So we will plan on that, notice that, notice up that meeting. It looks like you're all nodding. And lastly, we'd just like to ask the council what it would like to do regarding the second meeting in May. That is Memorial Day. The last two years, the council has simply canceled the second meeting in May, and would it be the council's desire to just do that this year?
I'm seeing a lot of heads affirmative.
We will plan accordingly. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Kellogg, did you have a question of staff?
Yes, I did. I believe that staff's reports are done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll just add that I received an email, and I do have pictures that were sent to me this afternoon, just before I came in. I'll forward them on to Mr. Crass. With the rains that we had last night and this morning, Christie Lane is, there's some streets, there are curbing, not the street, but the curbing, has been washed completely away, and, and there are some gaps, four inches deep by 12 inches wide, stretching the length of some of the driveways, three quarters of their double driveway. So I wanted to bring that up, and that is on Christie Lane.
All right. Councilmember Wesco?
Regarding the temporary decorations in, in the roundabout, you know, the mayor had expressed a disappointment that we didn't put the statue of him in the roundabout. If he has an extra one laying around, maybe we could...
Yeah, the only one I have is of a much younger version. I mean, people wouldn't recognize me, so. Councilmember Abdellguad?
We can make one that looks like a scarecrow.
I've lost control of the meeting. Please don't tell me it's something humorous.
No, 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 it's not. It's, it's serious. When, when I talk about the roundabout feature, I, I get serious. Is, would a half hour be long enough? We have met in the past four and a half hour, and there's been times that it wasn't long enough. Then I got one more question. If you'd like more, I, I've got nods. I, I saw nods out of Mr. Wesco and Ms. Abdellguad that we were fine with that.
Sure. If, I mean, if you, if you, it's hard to say how long something might take. If you'd like to meet a little bit earlier, if you'd like to meet at 7:15, whatever your pleasure is.
From my experience...
Or rather, 6:15, rather?
Yeah, from my experience, 45 minutes would probably be more sufficient. You know, that way, we, if we do break out early, you know, we don't have to run right over here. So I, I would suggest 6:15. Is that okay with the rest of the subcommittee?
We'll, we'll notice it up accordingly.
Okay. And then another thing, I have gotten a couple different calls that, and this might be my fault, you know, and I'll, I'll take the heat on this. And Mr. Holman said something to me tonight, as he is watching the presentation that we gave last Monday, that many people wasn't able to see the model. Is there some way that we can get either pictures or videos of, of what we got, that, that the folks can see it? You know, the, the people that have, have said something to me, I, I've been able to get those things to them, you know, when I can, through the email and that. But there, there's some interest out there, so.
Sure. I mean, if, if it's not showing on the, the meeting video, and you'd like to bring it in, we could, we could do some video and, and then post that. Would that...
I, I would be willing to do that, too. Like I say, I haven't seen the video, but from what Mr. Holman told me tonight is that he just saw from the waist up of, of the speaker, which was me, and they couldn't see the, the, the model.
Well, we'll, tell you what, we'll, we'll take a look at the video, see if we can salvage just a little bit so that people can get an idea of it. And if it doesn't look that way, then we'll, we'll ask you to bring that in, and we'll just take some special video, and then we can post that.
Okay, great.
All right. Moving on to committee reports, and I'm assuming that we don't have a roundabout committee report since we had a work session just last week. We have a couple of economic development events coming up, though. Ribbon cutting on April 22nd for Aflac Insurance at 1116A Remington Plaza, 11:30. And then on May 2nd, Balance Point Heating and Cooling at 109C South Madison will have ribbon cutting also at 11:30. Move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda to include Item A, City Council Minutes from March 24th, 2014. Item B, City Council Special Minute Meeting Minutes from March 31st, 2014. And Item C, the appointment of Bob Rabinowitz to Park 4.
Second.
Motion is a second to approve consent agenda consisting of Items A through C. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wesco?
I just, I, I want to thank Bob for volunteering for this position. You know, it's great when our citizens get involved with our, our commissions and with our, our boards, because that's really where we get a lot of input. I was fortunate to have coached with Bob. His son and my son played on the same baseball team. And so as somebody who regularly uses the parks and his family uses the parks, he's going to be a great addition.
Other discussion? There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Three, four. I leave your hands up for a second, please. All in favor? One, two, three, four, and I'm opposed? Abstention? One abstained. Okay. All right. Move on to unfinished business. The second reading, oh, nope. Unfinished business. I moved something to new business, so. We have the second reading of Bill 2944.
The second reading of Bill 2944 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the final plat for High Point at Creekmore Second Plat, lots 21 through 44, and tracks C and D, a subdivision in Section 8, Township 46 North, Range 32 West in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
Motion to dispose of the second reading?
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2944, the final plat for High Point at Creekmore.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2944. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, sir. Reason I abstained on the prior vote was, I was not on the council at the time, and obviously couldn't be a witness to whether or not the minutes were correct or incorrect. I will be voting on this measure as I read the literature provided. I feel pretty confident about what it's about. My prior background on planning zoning, I think I can make an informed decision on this one, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, and thank you for reminding me that I should have asked you why you abstained. Other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2949 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2949 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the master development agreement for the estates and estate villas of the Good Ranch, a subdivision in part of the northeast quarter of Section 29, and part of the north half of Section 28, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2949.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2949, the master development agreement for the estates of the Good Ranch.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2949. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wesco?
I abstained on the first vote of this, so I will be abstaining again. I just have a, a conflict with some of the language that's within the contract.
Other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve 2949. All in favor? One, two, three, one, two, three, four. Against? Abstention? And you already stated your reason for abstention. So motion carries. Now the second reading of Bill 2946 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2946 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction for the fiscal year 2014 curb replacement project, city project number 14-192-201, in the amount of $291,709.35, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2946.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2946, the award of contract for the 2014 curb program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2946. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now the second reading of Bill 2947 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2947 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with Google to provide the Google for Apps business software platform to the city for a not-to-exceed first-year price of $10,450.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2947.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2947, the award of contract for the cloud-based software.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2947. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And may we have the second reading of Bill 2948 by Title Only?
The second reading of Bill 2948 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with AnzuZu LLC to provide technical services to install Google Apps for Business software on the city system and provide training to all employees on the use of this software for an amount not to exceed $5,600, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Mr. Berlin?
Just a quick note, sir. I, I believe, see, Kirk, you, I think you were reading the previous, the one that we had on first reading, but as you, as council may recall, we, this is actually Google for government software. And that's true of the previous bill as well as this one. The correct bill is in your packet. So I just want to make that clear, that we did make that change out of the contract to make it Google for government as opposed to business.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2948.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2948, the award of contract for Google App software installation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 2948. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're on new business, where I've added an item, or the, I should say, the council has moved an item, the selection of Mayor Pro Ten. If I remember right, all we need is nominations to get the thing going. I'll entertain nominations for Mayor Pro Ten. I can't nominate myself. Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Ryan Wesco.
I'll second the nomination.
I don't know that we need a second for nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you, though, for, we're even now. Are there any other nominations? Councilmember Kellogg?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ms. Sonya Abdellguad for Mayor Pro Ten.
Other nominations? And do I usually call on you for the, the vote on this?
Yes, Mayor. We'll do it by roll call.
Please.
With each council member stating their selection for Mayor Pro Ten.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abdellguad?
I'll put for myself, Sonya Abdellguad.
Councilmember Boehner?
Councilmember Wesco.
Councilmember Holman?
Councilmember Wesco.
Councilmember Hubach?
Councilmember Wesco.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Ms. Abdellguad.
Councilmember Morehead?
Wesco.
Councilmember Stevens?
Wesco.
Councilmember Wesco.
I'll put for myself.
All right. Then, Councilmember Wesco, you will be the Mayor Pro Ten. Again, I'll, I'll be in contact with you. I'll let you know which meetings I'm not going to be able to attend this for the remainder of the year, along with the ribbon cutting. I'm kidding.
If it's a pizza place, I'm...
All right. We'll move on with first reading of new business, beginning with Item A, Bill 2951, which does require a public hearing. So may we have the first reading of Bill 2951 by Title Only?
The first reading of Bill 2951 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the zoning map from R3A multi-family residential district to PUD, Planned Unit Development District, land located in the northeast and northwest quarters of Section 17, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
And this, as I was saying, does require a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing by asking the applicant to come forward and state their name and address for the record, and present their proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Klinkenberg with Klinkenberg Law Firm, 216 North State Route 7, Pleasant Hill, Missouri 64080, representing the applicant. Very simply, what we're wanting to do is take just short of 22,000 square feet from the existing residential R3A and move it into the PUD, so that we can have a full two acres on what is now known as Lot 3 of the Legends. It's going to get a little confusing because it's going to end up being a second Lot 1, but we'll get to that. It's just, it's just a legal description. But basically, all we're doing is we have a major national chain restaurant that we have been courting that wants two acres and no less in order to purchase the property to locate their restaurant. So in order to do that, we have asked, we are asking the council to approve... So, in order to do that, we have asked, we are asking the council to approve the change of that twenty-one thousand some odd square feet from the R-three-A to the PUD, commercial use, so that we can have that full two acres. Now, one thing to note is that this won't change anything with regard, for those of you who are aware of, this won't change anything with regard to the boundaries of the TIF or the CID, and it also does not change the buildability of that lot. It will require the movement of an easement, but there's nothing in that easement currently, so there won't be any requirement for the movement of any utilities. So, all we're doing is respectfully requesting that you rezone that portion from R-three-A to the PUD. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Councilmember Westco?
Is all you need the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine feet? You don't need it to be larger?
No. That twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine feet will give us a full two acres on that lot, at two acres even.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes, the, in the packet, I'm showed a 2012 aerial photograph with a red box, and it's right along Cinnabar Drive. Is that land itself sufficient for what you're trying to, I mean, are you using all of the real estate all the way up to fifty-eight, or just, you just needed that little extra extension?
That, that red box denotes the portion that is being, that we're requesting to be rezoned from the R-three-A to the PUD. Once, assuming the approval, that will be from the southern line of that red box, all the way to Fifty-Eight Highway, will become one lot, one two-acre lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff report, then?
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. As Mr. Klinkenberg indicated, this request for reclassification of zoning is for property. It is located on the east side of Mott Drive, south of Foxwood Drive or Fifty-Eight Highway. Again, it's a reclassification of zoning of a half an acre of land from the multifamily R-three-A to our planned unit development districts. And this, this particular area would be generally located southeast of the Culvers Restaurant. A reclassification of zoning does require a public hearing that we advertised for this evening. I do need to enter into the record the notices that were sent to the adjoining property owners, the notice of publication in the Journal, our Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, our growth management plan, and then the staff report submitted to you this evening. The, this particular property is included in the Legends of Raymore Development, which was first approved back in, in 2003. At that time, the commercial area, the area that's currently zoned Planned Unit of Development, was, was smaller. It contained three commercial lots, and then the multifamily area was, was larger and had a total of one hundred and fifty-six units in the residential area. In 2008, the property owner came forward to expand the commercial area, and that's why you see the Planned Unit of Development zoning go all the way south to Cinnabar. So, all the land between Cinnabar and Foxwood Drive is currently zoned Planned Unit of Development and for commercial uses. And the particular lot that we're talking about this evening was increased in size at that time as well. It was increased in size approximately from one acre to its current acre and a half. I do want to note that when the rezoning was done to Planned Unit of Development in 2008, there was a preliminary development plan for the property, which showed the restaurant that is now Culvers, as well as some other commercial buildings and, and unified parking lot, unified access points on this particular area. On the south property line of what's known as Lot Three, where the subject, where the subject rezoning area is, there is a requirement for type A screening to be installed, so there's a landscape screen between commercial and any residential to the south. If this property that's requested for rezoning tonight is, is reclassified, then the type A screening gets moved to the south part of the newly zoned area. A rezoning does require notification of a good neighbor meeting, which we did provide that notification out. There was not a meeting held. We had, from the individuals that were contacted, we did not have an interest or need for the actual meeting, and so there was, there have been no comments directed regarding this particular request from the neighbors. This particular Planned Unit of Development, again, is all commercial, so it's only a commercial PUD. The uses that would be allowed there would be any of the uses that are allowed in our professional office, our C-one or C-two zoning districts. The next item on the agenda is a final plat that would incorporate the area that's proposed for rezoning. I want to mention it now because there is a component of the final plat that I think is applicable to the rezoning action. The property owner has indicated that there is a no-build line, if you would, the building setback for the area being proposed for rezoning is such that there will not be any extension of a building into this area proposed for rezoning. This area would only be utilized for parking and for landscaping. So, it does, in fact, even though the commercial encroach is a little closer to the townhomes, the property would only be utilized for parking and landscaping. The Planning Commission did submit findings of fact regarding this request at their, that they made at their April first meeting, and they did vote six-zero to accept the findings and forward this case to the council with a recommendation of approval. I included the memorandum from the Engineering Division on adequate public facilities, as well as the meeting minutes for the Planning Commission meeting for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? All righty. I'll open the floor for public comment. Please keep yourself, identify yourself with the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-one.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill twenty-nine fifty-one, the rezoning of Foxwood Plaza, Lot One.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-one. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the first reading of Bill twenty-nine forty-five.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine forty-five by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving the final plat for Foxwood Plaza, Lot One, a subdivision in the northeast and northwest quarters of Section seventeen Township forty-six north, range thirty-two west in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Ask the applicant to come forward and state the name and address for the record, present their proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Klinkenberg at the Klinkenberg Law Firm, two sixteen North State Route Seven, Pleasant Hill, Missouri, six four zero eight zero. The only thing that I really need to add for this portion, or that I desire to add to this portion, is that you will note that in, in the original PUD that we had approved, it was approved with a strip center on this portion. As it stands right now, we're looking at more of a single-use building, as I stated before. We're courting a restaurant now. By approving this, by no means means that we're approving the restaurant, but it does get us one step closer. And I think it's a, it's a restaurant that everyone would recognize, and I'm not at liberty to say, but it's a restaurant that I think most people would be pleased to have in this, in the city. So, with that, we ask your approval of the final plat.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
The staff report?
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you, sir. The Bill twenty-nine forty-five is the, would be the approval of what's going to be known as Foxwood Plaza, Lot One, and the, the reason for the change in name, currently it is known as Lot Three of the Legends. It actually currently is a replat of Lot, of Lot Three and part of Lot Four of the Legends, and if we were to move forward with this particular replat, then the, the legal description is a replat of a replat. It gets, gets very complex, and to, to clean it up, it's actually simpler to, to move forward and classify this property as a separate, separate lot, separate subdivision. That's why it is known as Foxwood Plaza, Lot One. The undeveloped area of the Legends is still referred to as the Legends of Lot One. So, it's really more semantics than anything, but I just wanted to clarify that for the council. As Mr. Klinkenberg indicated earlier, there currently is an easement that's planted between the existing lot and the area that's proposed for the rezoning that's being added to this particular lot. That easement will be relocated to the southern line of this lot, so it still would be usable in the future. There are no utilities in that easement, so vacating it is a, is a process that could be done through the, through the plat this evening. Again, this lot with the extended area would be a total of two-point-zero acres in size. Public infrastructure is already in place to serve development on this particular property. Water, sewer are available. Stormwater runoff of this particular lot can be included in the existing stormwater system. Planning Commission submitted findings of fact for your consideration, and at their April first meeting, they did vote six-zero to accept those findings and forward this case to the council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine forty-five.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill twenty-nine forty-five, the final plat for Foxwood Plaza, Lot One.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine forty-five. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item C. We have the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-seven by title only.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-seven by title only. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the amended and restated tax increment financing redevelopment agreement between the city of Raymore, Missouri and the Raymore Galleria LLC for the Fifty-Eight Highway West Extended Development TIF area.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on David Bushak, our City Special Economic Development Council from the law firm of Gilmore and Bell.
Good evening. My name is David Bushak. My name is David Bushak with the law firm of Gilmore and Bell. We are Special Economic Development Council and Bond Counsel to the city. The ordinance that is before you would approve an amendment to the TIF contract. The city recently completed a financing, was financing new redevelopment project costs in connection with that TIF plan, and also refinancing of the two thousand and five bonds. It was a complex financing. To give you a brief explanation of what this ordinance would do in relation to that financing of the TIF contract, I'll start with a very brief discussion of an issue that we've discussed before, and that is the two different types of financing that happen in connection with TIF. The redevelopment project costs are funded typically in one of two ways, either through the issuance of bonds or through what's called a pay-as-you-go reimbursement process. When bonds are issued, it produces a pool of funds that can be used immediately to reimburse project costs, and then the TIF revenue repays those bonds over time. The second primary financing approach is pay-as-you-go, which means bonds are not issued, but instead, as those TIF revenues are collected, they're used to pay reimbursable project costs as those revenues come in. This financing, the end result is, as I said, it's a fairly complex financing, but it's a mix of both of those types of financing. The TIF revenue repays bonds, and the TIF also repays pay-as-you-go costs in a certain priority. It's common for interest to be paid on the bonds, and on the pay-as-you-go financing, that's a matter of the TIF contract. Interest can be provided or not provided as a TIF contract provides. The Second Amendment that was approved in 2012 by this council authorized the payment of interest on the pay-as-you-go portion of the financing, but it did not find its way into the TIF contract that was approved in 2012. In our discussion of the financing, the developer emphasized to the city that the interest on those pay-as-you-go costs is a critical component of their financing. So, to, to give you a brief explanation of the practical effect of this ordinance, I'll turn to a common analogy that's used in this type of financing, and that's the waterfall analogy. The TIF revenue in this waterfall would be the water flowing into a series of buckets, and the TIF documents, the TIF contract and the bond documents that the council approved, sets up a series of buckets into which the water flows. And when the first bucket's filled up, then it spills over to the second bucket. When the second bucket fills up and so forth, it spills down through these buckets. The indenture that was approved by the city council for the recent financing established a series of essentially twelve buckets. And what we're talking about tonight with this ordinance is the tenth bucket in that waterfall. The tenth bucket is certain pay-as-you-go reimbursable project costs, which comes later in the priority of financing, the funding after the bonds are paid. So, we're essentially talking about the capacity and the size of that tenth bucket, which will repay the developer on a pay-as-you-go cost after most of the other costs are already The practical effect of this ordinance is that it should not extend the life of the TIF. It's already projected that the TIF will pay off, the bonds will be repaid in the year 2028, and each of the project ordinances that have already been approved by the council will last for their full duration. It's essentially a question of how much of each of those buckets near the end of the waterfall gets filled up, and it changes the capacity of that tenth bucket. That is a, a simple summary of what is a complex financing, and as I mentioned, it's a, it's an issue the developers emphasize is of importance for them in the flow of TIF revenue.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill twenty-nine fifty-seven, the First Amendment to the Galleria TIF agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-seven. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-two by title only.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine fifty-two by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with J&amp;M Displays in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to provide pyrotechnic services for the July fourth fireworks display.
The staff report?
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Two bids were received for the fireworks for the Fourth of July. Staff is recommending the most responsive bidder, which is J&amp;M Fireworks, in the amount of eleven thousand dollars for this. There are a couple of stipulations that I'd like to discuss. The first being, if we would pay half of the cost of the fireworks, which would be fifty-five hundred dollars upfront, they would give us more fireworks, and also included in that stipulation is they would like a three-year contract. Previously, we've had a one-year contract with two additional years as an option. We were asking that we go ahead and approve a three-year contract for this firm. There is language in the fireworks contract that allows if they do not meet performance standards as set forth, we do have an out clause, so we would not necessarily have to, to go with them if we felt that the display was not adequate for what we were trying to do for the Fourth of July. Any questions?
Questions of staff? Councilmember Kellogg, and then Westco?
You said that there's an out clause in the contract. Would that cost us any money to use that option if we did choose to?
No, sir. It's strictly a performance clause. After a review of the first year's fireworks display, if we felt that they did not meet the performance standards that we set forth, we would have the option at no additional cost to discontinue the contract, and we would have to rebid it for the next year.
Councilmember Westco?
Last year, and I don't remember who the, who the vendor was that provided the fireworks display, but the, the finale didn't go off, if I, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
Did we get reimbursed for that, or what's the situation with that?
We did get reimbursed for what the finale did go off. We were not, or I should say, we were dissatisfied with the display and the way the display was shot. Fortunately, that vendor did not bid this year, and so consequently, this is a new vendor. We have checked their references with several cities that are shooting displays similar in scope to what we're trying to provide to our citizens, and all of the, the reports have come back very positive. In fact, the last one I talked to, they had been with this firm for twelve years and had been satisfied with every year that they'd shot their display for them.
Councilmember Westco?
Do we have a, a clause in our contract that talks about reimbursement to the city if another incident like we had happen last year happened, or? another incident like we had happen last year happened, or is that something we just handle kind of loosely?
We, they give us an itemized list of all the fireworks that will be displayed by name. So, if there are shells that are not shot, there is a cost associated with each one of those shells, whether it's a 1-inch, 2-inch, all the way up to the 6-inch shells that we shoot from the park. So consequently, for anything that they don't shoot, that does not go off, we will get reimbursed back for those shells.
Councilmember Morehead.
And this is as much for Councilmember Wesco. On page 238 of our packet, and this is kind of for Mr. Kennedy, I believe isn't that the penalty for shell shortage and the warranty language in here doesn't, isn't that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2952.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2952, the Ward of Contract for the Independence Day Fireworks Show.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2952. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the reading of Resolution 1419.
The reading of Resolution 1419 by Title Only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the procedural rules for meetings of the Raymore City Council.
And the staff report?
Thank you, sir. At the city council work session on March 17th, 2014, the council discussed voting matters at city council meetings, including the appropriate procedure that should be followed when a member is disqualified from voting due to a conflict of interest. Mayor Kirkoff has suggested that the council's procedural rules be amended to provide that council member who's disqualified from voting shall step down from the dais and not participate in discussion or vote on that item, which is something that the council did discuss at that work session, and a resolution has been prepared accordingly.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the reading of Bill Resolution 1419.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Resolution 1419, the Amendment of Council Rules Regarding Disqualification from Voting.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 1419. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Holman?
Just clarification, as the new kid in town, the previous procedure was that the person just stayed up here. Is that what happened?
It's been up to the council member. Occasionally, a council member has stepped down, but it wasn't required.
Councilmember Morehead?
I had, I actually had two instances since I've joined the council where this is applied. In a previous instance, I stepped off the dais just because I felt that my participation up here even tacitly could give an endorsement or a rejection, and I felt if I nodded or if I made gestures, that that can be misinterpreted. So, I was never told to leave the dais. I just felt it would be more appropriate to give that gesture that I was not a participant, and that while I am not the reason for this language, I know that that was part of the discussion process.
Thanks. I just didn't know what the background of this report was. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Huback?
I couldn't find where it was in our, the resolution. I looked at our council rules or procedures, and I didn't see where it was mentioned, so I must be overlooking something. I think we need to take a look at this, for I have several concerns on it. One of them has to do with the fact that disqualified is never identified. What do you mean by the term disqualified? It's one thing to say that they have to get off up here, but who, what is the definition of disqualified? Nowhere in here have I seen that, so that was one question. Another one was, we need to reconsider what we're talking about on a motion to reconsider, because it says in here to reconsider something, you have to be able to go to the next council meeting and ask for it to be reconsidered.
This isn't about a motion to reconsider.
This is all part of the same thing.
No, this is just, this amendment of the council rules procedure. Eric, you look like you were about to say something.
Well, just to answer your question about where the change was, it's shown in Item 14. There's been some wording added in Item 14 of the council rules that says, "A council member who is disqualified from voting shall step down from the dais and not participate in discussion or vote on the item." So, that's the only change that's there in Item 14.
Councilmember Morehead?
I am.
Oh, Councilmember Morehead, that's the floor, and then I'll let you at the floor.
Ms. Huback, the language to be legally disqualified is in our charter, and during our work session, that's what we were referring to. I would turn to Mr., our city attorney, to address the issue of a legal definition, but since it typically applies to me, I know that during our work session, it was when a conflict of interest arose, and in our work packet, there was some language in there that talked about conflicts of interest and disqualification.
Councilmember Huback?
I was disqualified from voting and even attending a private council meeting when the Galleria was first started, because I was a member of the Historical Society, and the two attorneys at that time said I had a built-in bias. I got no money from anybody. I didn't have a position of authority, anything like that. But for, I think, four weeks, I was denied the right to attend any meeting because, quote, "I was disqualified." And if you can do that for me, you can do it to other people, and that's why I wanted definitely said in here what it means to be disqualified, because my understanding of disqualified was if you were going to personally benefit from something. And I did not personally benefit from anything, but Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Willarth both denied me the right to attend the meetings. And I have, I have not forgotten that, believe me.
Other discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1419. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition? And abstention?
I certainly do abstain.
Okay. And your reason for abstaining? What is your reason for abstaining?
Because it doesn't spell out anything. Just saying that somebody is just can't vote because they're disqualified doesn't spell it out, where you can go ahead and deny a properly seated council member from attending a meeting.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the first reading of Bill 2950 by Title Only.
The first reading of Bill 2950 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending Schedule 1 of Title III Traffic Codes by establishing a no parking zone within the city limits.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. At the city council work session a week ago, the city staff presented some concerns regarding traffic on Foxridge Drive between the Creekmore Development Entrance and 58 Highway, and recommended that northbound and southbound Foxridge between Granada Drive and 58 Highway be posted no parking, and an ordinance has been prepared accordingly.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Kellogg?
Just for clarification, the box stretches all the way down to Granada from Foxwood Drive. Both sides of the street, the full length of those, of that strip will be no parking. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2950.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2950. Foxridge Drive, no parking, from Granada Drive to 58 Highway.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2950. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the first reading of Bill 2954 by Title Only?
The first reading of Bill 2954 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending Section 210.070 of the City Code Regarding Harassment of Individuals by Telephone Calls or Other Electronic Communication.
And the staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in the city attorney, Joe Willer.
The answer to the last question was 14.1 of the Charter with respect to the prohibition and disqualification that Councilmember Morehead was referring to. I apologize that I wasn't quick enough to find it right at the point of question. With respect to this item, it shows when we send our municipal judge and city prosecutor to CLEs that they learn things and come back and create work, so that is a good thing. And they learned in the, in one of their recent ones, that the current code we had with respect to harassment had a problem in it and had been a similar state statute and been ruled unconstitutional in the case of State versus Vaughn. And we think we can save what we have here, as was amended in the Kansas City Code intersection 210-70 harassment, to say that the person commits the harassment if, without good cause and with the purpose of frightening, intimidating, or causing emotional distress to another person, he communicates in writing or by electronic communication a threat. The one that specifically was struck down before was your Section 3, makes a telephone call or communicates in writing by electronic communication anonymously, and Number 4, makes repeated telephone calls or electronic communications. This might have had more impact when the teenagers was here to be learned that it is not just repeated telephone calls that can put you in harassment, it's what they are not justified or without good cause are creating harassment. So, by doing that, we think we salvage our code section 210.070, and Judge Lett and city prosecutor, Mr. Marshall, recommend having, I drew the revision, and they've recommended its approval and adoption to the council.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? Councilmember Holman and then Councilmember Kellogg?
Mr. Willer, I'm assuming it, is it talks about the forms of communication being writing, telephone, electronic communication. I'm assuming, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the same harassment or violation in person probably would come under like a disturbing the peace type ordinance or something, something else, since it doesn't address it in this particular section.
Yeah, we have other sections that are applicable, but with respect to this one on these types of communication, I guess the incidence has come up. Would appear to me from Number 4 that we're also getting into texting and all that other stuff.
Thank you, sir.
And I take it that that answers your question, Councilmember? Okay. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Willer. You did answer that question. It was in regards to texting. In the changed language, it says, "Without cause, without good cause, and with the purpose of frightening, intimidating, and causing emotional distress to another person, he or she." Should that "without good cause and" be, would it be better for it to say "without good cause or"? I think you're on what I'm saying there.
Let's let the attorney answer, and then, if necessary, we'll let the other attorney answer.
I think the model that we penned it after used it in the disjunctive with the "and," and so I was trying to be as consistent with the model where the statute was, and both there in the City of Kansas City.
And what, the reason why I ask that is because would that be a two-tiered thing, that it would, "without good cause and the purpose of," that's why I say "or," you know? And and/or are two different things. If you put "and" in there, the two seems to me that both would have to apply. If you have "or," either "or" would be able to apply.
You're correct. Both have to apply, and why I think they put in "and" is because they want those second elements, that there be frightening, intimidating, and causing emotional distress in all instances of application or making this harassment. And by doing it in the disjunctive with "or," you could have either, and without good cause gets too broad or in the eye, subjective in the eye of the beholder, whereas when we throw in that second element, that there has to have been frightening, intimidation, or emotional distress. Freedom of speech is given a lot of protection and is held to a high protection here. We're limiting it here some, and when we do it, you do it in narrow grounds, and so we want these elements included along without the good cause.
Councilmember Morehead?
To expand on that, over the last year, I've been putting together an anti-bullying proposal that would help redefine the statute. Going over a number of cities around the United States that have dealt with this, the phrase "without good cause" has been discussed and debated throughout these municipalities. Mr. Willer touched upon a lot of the general rationale of that. I would also point out, one of the ironic examples going to the specific language "without good cause" pointed to issues of, for example, teachers or coaches. So, when a coach is, through negative reinforcement, is trying to relay a point to a player, that actually can create, can be somewhat, quote, "frightening, intimidating, and cause distress." But because it is within the realm of coaching, a number of these councils, as well as legal cases, have said that the "without good cause" goes to address that. So, that language does have some significance.
Other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2954.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2954, Amendment to the City Code, Section 210.070, dealing with harassment.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2954. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 2955. May we have the first reading?
The first reading of Bill 2955 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending Section 385.140A of the City Code Regarding Evidence of Financial Responsibility Required by an Owner and Operator of a Motor Vehicle When Stopped in the City of Raymore.
Staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in Mr. Willer.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. This is a classic case of the municipal judge and our city prosecutor finding a loophole in our existing code, which was a vehicle from out of state, did not have to have the financial responsibility, proof that is fossilized by state statute, which I've cited to you in here, 38514, 333, excuse me, 025. And so now, we have our tag on that to make it a municipal offense beside the state offense, that you have to show proof of your financial responsibility, but it didn't mention vehicles registered in another state. And so what we are requiring here is that those vehicles, which are registered or should be required to be registered in another state, be subject to that ordinance when stopped here in the city of Raymore. And the, I guess we've had this raised one time in a loophole, so the city prosecutor, Mr. Marshall, does urge and recommend adoption of this ordinance to close that loophole.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2955.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2955, Amendment to the City Code, Section 385.140A, Financial Responsibility, Operation of Motor Vehicle.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2955. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public comment, seeing that we're done with new business. And if I had done this an hour earlier, we would have had public that may have made comment, but I'll open the floor for public comment. If you have anything to say, come forward, identify yourself to the record, and keep your comments to less than five minutes. Well, that's true. There is a member of the public out there now, isn't there? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll open the floor to Mayor, Council Communication, using my handy-dandy random list of council member names. This evening, we'll begin with Councilmember Wesco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to start off by saying that I think the Veterans Day Parade, the Parade for Veterans, I think is a great idea, and, you know, I'd like to express my support for it. I also am about to thank two Bobs. I want to thank Bob Robinowitz for volunteering to serve on our park board. You know, I said earlier, it's very important when citizens get involved on our committees and commissions, because, you know, that's truly how citizens have a say in what goes on in the government. And then I want to thank now Mr. Pifo, since he's no longer council member, for your service. It was a pleasure getting to know you and serving with you the past eight months, or however brief a time it was, and looking forward to your input moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Boehner?
No comments at this time.
Councilmember Stevens?
No comments.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before tonight's meeting, I asked the mayor if we could extend a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy in Overland Park, Kansas on Sunday afternoon. If it's appropriate, I'd ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
My hearts and prayers go out to the victims and the family of that tragedy. Another thing that I, I've got a couple of things here that I need to talk about tonight. I was approached during the St. Patrick's Day Parade by Mr. Rick Tucker and Councilman Jeff Fletcher of Belton, when I was over in Belton before the parade, and I was asked what our capacity was for our shelter, and I thought they were talking about our park shelter. I come to find out quickly thereafter, they were talking about our animal control shelter. And Mr. Rick Tucker is a volunteer, staff probably already knows, but I just... And Mr. Rick Tucker is a volunteer, staff probably already knows, but I, I just, little background, Mr. Rick Tucker works as a volunteer animal control officer, volunteer over for Belton, because they don't have a, a full-time employee that does that, I guess. And he was telling me that they are having to put down several animals, you know? He's very concerned about that. That particular day, he was at the parade, setting up and getting ready for the parade, and he told me that as soon as the parade was over, he was going to go pick up, he was supposed to go pick up an animal, and it looked like that animal was going to be put down. So he was in no hurry to go do that, but he had to do what he needed to do. The question was, is, is there an opportunity? He asked me if there's an opportunity or willingness for, for us to work with them. I says, you know, I really don't know, but I'm willing to ask those questions and see if, if, if staff can work with Belton staff, if there's somewhere that we can, we can help, or if it's viable, or, or something there. You know, I, I would like to ask staff begin dialogue i- in that aspect for, you know, there's a need over in Belton, and, and the council member and a citizen have reached out, and I told them that I would do that. The other thing is, I've already spoke about tonight, is, is the street curb on Christie. If I, if we can ask staff to drive those streets over there in Foxhaven, because those, those east, east-west running streets are pretty much, I think, pretty much the same age, and if we can have that checked out. Also, I'd like to welcome my old friend, Jay Holman. Welcome. I'm pleased to be able to serve with you again. It was a pleasure serving with you on the planning and zoning, and I look forward to serving with you here in the future. Congratulations to Councilman Morehead. Very well done. Congratulations to Sonia Abdalgawad for her, winning her election. I did receive some communication from my constituents, and very complimentary of you, Mr. Westco, uh, Mr. West, Mr. Morehead, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Morehead, very complimentary of you. They, they told me that you were running opposed, and of course, I knew that, but they appreciated you showing up to the council candidate forum to answer the same questions that Mr. Holman answered, and Mrs. Abdalgawad and Mr. West all answered, and they were, they just couldn't say enough about that, and they really appreciate it. And I told them that I would pass along those comments to you and say thank you for them. So that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Well, thanks. The learning begins, and I'm amazed what I've learned just tonight. I was kind of joking with Mr. Willerth before, I said, if things go south, you get to blame my trainers, because most of them are sitting out here, Mr. Catterett, Mr. Willerth, Mr. Crass, and they're probably going to distance themselves from me quickly. But really appreciate, obviously, the, the citizens, even though I ran unopposed, I didn't get beat by the, the formidable Mickey Mouse write-in that, that comes in every election. And really want to extend my appreciation to you all, even before the election, encouragement during the competition with Mr. Pifo. And, and thanks to you, sir, for your service and the time that you spent here, and, and your kind words. And everybody has really just jumped in and treated me extremely well, and, and offered me support and services from, from staff throughout the council. And just, I think it goes to show kind of the overall community spirit that we have in town, and glad to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubach?
For some time, I've been concerned about the lack of leadership within the council. And the reason is, is I think, is because we never get a chance to get together. What I am concerned, what I'm going to propose to the council is that we go into a retreat pretty soon and discuss among ourselves what it is we want, and the goals and the objectives for the city, what I call legacy leadership ideas. And it's one of these things where anything, we can talk about anything and everything, and what we would like to see done for either our constituents or for the City of Raymore. In order to do that, we can do it, and I've just checked with Mr. Willerth, as long as we don't take a vote, we can do, we can talk about any and everything. And I would like to have your support on the setting up at our next work session, setting up the details for how we would do it. Where we would meet, how we would meet, and how long we would meet, and who we would want to meet with us. Is it just the council? Do we want to add the mayor? Do we want anybody else? How would we do it? Because I think it's very important, in talking to different ones of you, I find that you've got some really good ideas that you would like to see enacted. It just needs us all getting together and making it happen. And like I say, one of the things that we have to do get started right away is because our year is not the same as anybody else's. Our year runs from April to March. We are, it's an election for all of us. And so we need to get started on whatever we're going to do, because one of the things that we know, on if anything's going to go into a budget, they start working on it in May and June and July, so we need to start working on it right away. And if you are agreeable in our next work session, maybe we can work out all the details and get started on it. Because I feel that time is the essence. None of us are getting any younger. Oh, and the final thing, having to do, my birthday is Memorial Day, May the thirtieth. And for years, for years, when I was little, I thought the parades and all of the speeches and everything were in honor of my birthday. And the reason I didn't stay and heap on the graves was because mother didn't make enough cake and ice cream for everybody else.
Alrighty. Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Thank you. I just want to take a quick minute to thank everybody in Ward Four for getting out and voting, and choosing me to be their voice on the city council for the next two years. I'm looking forward to serving two more years with this council and working with city staff again. And I would like to welcome Councilmember Holman to the council, and wish well Mr. Pifo as he gets back to normal life. Congratulations to the Parks Department, especially in our tree board for the Tree City USA recognition, that's pretty impressive. It didn't take very long for us to get that. I thought that was pretty cool. I was happy to see Cole and Callie come out and talk about Relay for Life this evening. So finally, it's someone other than just me. On the agenda, I noticed it was listed as a high school event, but it's actually a community event. So again, I would like to welcome everyone to create your team and join us at the Relay for Life on June thirteenth, out at Raypek High School. As Cole said, you can go to relayforlife.org/rapekmoe and start your team, or sign up to be on an existing team, or make a donation. We could have all of our council member families make a team. I know some of the city staff's already on, on a team, supporting the Relay for Life and the American Cancer Society. And I was really excited to hear about all of the neat things coming up from our Parks Department. We've got the Easter in the park, jog with your dog, arts in the park, of course, baseball and soccer going on, so lots of neat stuff going on with the park.
Thank you. Councilmember Morehead?
Apparently saved the lawyer for last.
Well, this week, next week, you're about the middle.
Okay, fair enough. First of all, I, I just want to say thank you to Ward Two, and, and I'm honored and privileged to serve Ward Two, and, and it, it was really appreciated. I'm looking forward to the next two years. I want to commend as well Councilmember Stevens for his win, Councilmember Abdalgawad, and Councilmember Holman. I myself also, Mr. Holman, welcome, you, I've served on, on planning and zoning with you, actually, based on all the boards, which other board hadn't you served on by now? So it was about time you joined the council. So congratulations, I look forward to working with you. I do have to, I didn't get a chance to publicly commend former council member, Pifo, he still gets that designation. But just to say, Bob, it was an honor to serve with you up here. I don't care about the amount of time, you brought a lot of quality, a lot of character and class to the board. Your contributions were valuable. Really, I will miss, though, having to justify Jeff Gordon every week after the NASCAR races with you, but I, I appreciate it every moment on the board with you, so thank you. I will say about our park, our parks, you know, I myself am looking forward to the Jog with Your Dog this year. I myself went to the animal shelter, and I adopted a little dog from that shelter. So I'm going to bring that dog out, and it is, I guess, we don't always appreciate how much we can give and receive from that shelter, and it's a very important part of our city that we need to honor and support. The only negative about this adoption is it always steals my seat on the couch when I get up to get something to drink. But I am going to bring her out to enjoy that. I'm thrilled and excited about baseball, so I'm also looking forward to that. Want to appreciate the Cass County Historical Society, I really was unaware of the proposed Veterans Parade, and want to also support that as well, as well as the Relay for Life, which I did not participate last year, but hoping to again this year. So with that, I'm finally done. Thank you again, everybody.
Okay, you've used your time for the next three weeks also, so. Dr. Pifo, thank you again for your service to the city, and I think everybody up here would appreciate if you'd come in, say, once a month, and just tell us about all your travels. Mr. Holman, now Councilmember Holman, welcome, welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Westcoat and Morehead, for your advice on the park board appointment. And thank you to Mr. Rabenowitz for volunteering. And I'll remind Councilmember Holman and Boehner. There's, there's a hole in the park board now, so. You have an idea? Good, good. I, too, will put in my two cents for Jog with Your Dog. It's, you don't have to jog, you can walk. It is a fascinating and fun event, a number of well-behaved dogs, and occasionally well-behaved owners. I'm also looking forward to the Arts in the Park, and, and that's running from ten AM to four PM, is that correct? So that ought to be a, a really good time, so. I don't believe we have reason to go into executive session. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Second.
A motion in a second to adjourn. I'm going to pause for a little bit, give everybody a chance to think about how they would like to vote on this issue. All in favor? We're in adjournment, thank you, everybody.